Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining the Washtenaw County Road Commission's virtual meeting and in-person meeting about the Natural Beauty Road process on Warren Road between Nixon Road and Dixborough Road, uh, Dixborough Road in Ann Arbor Township. My name is Tiffany Alafon and I'm the Washtenaw County Road Commission's Communications Manager. Next slide.
It's how we're getting it. Oh, there we go.
Uh, this morning, I will go over a few housekeeping items before turning it over to staff for a presentation about the Natural Beauty Road process. Then we will open the meeting up for comments. One second as I let people into the virtual option. This meeting audio and video is being recorded. After the presentation, you will be asked to virtually raise your hand during Q and A, and I will provide instructions at the time on how to do this from either your computer, the Zoom app, or your touchtone phone. The chat feature in this meeting is turned on. If you have any questions or comments during the presentation, feel free to ask it in the chat and we will address it during the comment period. You can find the chat window at the bottom of your screen. Joining me today is Project Manager and Hearing Manager for the Natural Beauty Road, Becky Hool. I am turning the presentation over to you, Becky.
So, good morning, everybody, and thank you again. This is the public hearing for the Natural Beauty Road designation of Warren Road between Nixon and Dixborough. Um, I am Becky Hool and will be presenting our process and the evaluation results. Also up here with me, I have Matt McDonnell, our Director of Engineering, Brent Schlack, the Assistant Director of Engineering, and Sam Smith, the Engineering Clerk. So, the purpose of this meeting is to allow residents the opportunity to state your opinion on the designation of Warren Road as the Natural Beauty Road. I am acting as the Hearing Examiner to conduct this hearing and will report the results back to the Washtenaw County Board of Road Commissioners to aid in their decision. Uh, for those of you here in person, if you haven't signed in the attendance sheet already, please do that. Everybody virtually, if you could write your name and address in the chat, that would be appreciated. Uh, we also have some handouts on the table by the door. There's the public comment sheet that you can fill out and turn in, a copy of Public Act 451, the WCRC guidelines, and the Warren Road evaluation results. So, the process for designating Natural Beauty Road begins with a petition. The petition for Warren Road was received on May 1st of this year. We then sent it to Ann Arbor Township where they certified that 25 of the signatures were valid. We then scheduled this public hearing and sent notices out to the property owners along Warren Road. We posted public notices on MLive and on social media and placed message boards along Warren Road. Then, we evaluate the road and report the findings at this hearing, and then we'll summarize it all and take it to a board meeting for them to make a decision. Uh, the guidelines that we use is based on Public Act 451 of 1994, Part 357. Uh, we look at the character of the road, which must have natural features and native vegetation. We also measure the length of the road, which needs to be at least a half a mile. Uh, the petition segment of Warren Road was 2.35 miles. The function should, or the road should function as a local access road, which Warren Road does, and there shouldn't be any roadside development. Um, the roadway condition needs to have adequate drainage and safety. Uh, the volume cannot exceed 500 vehicles per day. We did collect data on two different parts of Warren Road. Uh, east of Nixon had 455, east of Earhart had 294. And then, the vegetation excluding farmland and driveways needs to be a minimum of 90%. And we found Warren Road to have 81.2% of natural vegetation. If designated as a Natural Beauty Road, Warren will still receive the same level of maintenance practices. That includes mowing, grading, dust control, or new stone surface. Um, we also maintain the cross drainage, and if necessary for safety or drainage, we may trim or remove trees and shrubs, um, or implement some other safety improvements. We also install a Natural Beauty Road sign at each end of the designated section to identify that it is a Natural Beauty Road. Uh, we wanted to point out that the designation of a Natural Beauty Road does not lower the speed limit. Uh, the Road Commission currently has, or Washtenaw County, has 11 roads that are designated as Natural Beauty Roads. They're shown here on this map. Uh, there's Gale Road and a separate section of Warren Road in Ann Arbor Township, or Superior Township, Tubbs and Marshall in Zio, Marley in Manchester, Riker in Dexter, Scully in Strawberry Lake and Webster, Hartman and Celine, Stein in Ann Arbor, and Tesmer in Lodi. Our next step after this meeting is we'll summarize all of the comments and the data and take it to the board meeting on September 9th where they will make their final decision. So, now I will pass it on to Tiffany for comments.
Thank you, Becky. Uh, we will now hear your public comments. If you are viewing the meeting on your computer, first make sure to click "Join Audio." You can then raise your hand by clicking the Participants or Reactions button at the bottom of your screen, and then Raise, and then the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your right, of right of your, the right of your screen. If you dialed into the meeting from your touchtone phone, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine. As the meeting host, I will unmute participants with raised hands, one at a time. I will announce your username or last four digits of your phone number when it is your turn to speak. We are happy to answer as many questions and have comments as possible, but please be respectful of each other's time. If you have questions that aren't answered before you called, that haven't been answered, you can lower your hand by clicking the Lower Hand button or dialing star nine. For our in-person attendees, uh, you can raise your hand and we'll ask you to go to the podium to make your comments. I'll begin now. We'll begin now for anyone who would like to make a public comment. Ma'am? Can you state your name when you go to the mic? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, everyone. My name is Anne Burke, and I live in Ann Arbor Township on Warren Road 2891 Warren Road. I'm offering, um, public comment in support of the Natural Beauty Road designation on this section of Warren Road, as I think this is a wonderful opportunity for Washtenaw County to extend the already established Natural Beauty Road designation on Warren Road, which is east of Dixborough Road, and potentially make future connections to other designations, particularly in Superior Township. Um, a little background about myself, my family and I moved to our home on Warren Road primarily because of its natural beauty and the quiet respite the road offers, um, just a couple miles away from the city limits. Along with other community members, we regularly use Warren Road for walking, running, and biking. We know, uh, that the natural and unique features on the rural dirt road attract residents and county citizens to use Warren Road, um, for recreation, even horseback riding. For example, over 50 sisters reside at the Dominican Sisters of Mary Motherhouse, one of whom is here today, and access Warren Road for physical recreation. Additionally, cyclists across southeast Michigan use Warren Road as a portion of their route. Um, every year, for example, Sick Transit, a bike shop in Ann Arbor, hosts a biking event that sees approximately 100 cyclists, um, using this section of Warren Road as part of their event route, um, and this happens in the spring and fall. Further, running groups and teams, including the Father Gabriel Richard, um, high school cross-country team, Ann Arbor PR running group, and the University of Michigan Track and Field Training Teams, all use this noted section of Warren Road for training and recreation, no doubt because of its natural beauty. Um, borders of the noted section of Warren Road consist of native trees and vegetation, open areas with scenic and natural vistas, wetlands, as well as herds and flocks of wildlife, which I imagine you found in your evaluation of the road. Um, the rural gravel road is also home to protected land, preserved farmland, and a sandwiched, um, between a couple, um, Washtenaw County natural preserves, including Dominican Meadows and the Raymond F. Goodrich Preserve. I believe this proposed designation meets the Road Commission's criteria for granting Natural Beauty Road designation, because it does not consist of major development. It is classified as a local, local road, as you pointed out, and it primarily serves adjacent property owners and sees low motorized traffic. Um, I do have a question around vegetation, um, noting that, um, that percentage might be under 90%, um, and wonder, um, how that is measured and whether, um, that might be something, like an opportunity for residents to contribute, um, in its growth, because it seems like just under the minimum. Um, ultimately, I know that Washtenaw County cares deeply about natural preservation throughout the area. It's why people live and play here, uh, and design, designating Warren Road as a Natural Beauty Road is a great opportunity to add to those efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky, do you wanna, or, uh, do you wanna address the, how we measured the percentage?
Um, so, we use a, uh, digital measuring device in a truck and we'd go by, and it's, if a part of the road has been mowed or landscaped, like we can tell that a homeowner has landscaped it, then that is obviously not natural. And then, all of the other, uh, where we have mowed along the road, that is still considered the natural vegetation. Um, it's just if it's been landscaped is all what we would consider developed.
And a lot of times, just to kind of elaborate on that, you know, beauty is kind of in the eye of the beholder, right? Like, and so, where a landscaped or manicured lawn front may look very beautiful and trees and, and definitely can look beautiful, but, uh, when we're looking at the criteria within the policy and within the act, uh, we're looking at more of that natural native type vegetation. And so, that's what we measure. Granted, it's just one criteria within our process. Ultimately, our board makes the decision on whether or not to designate or not designate.
Do we have, uh, uh, any more questions from the, uh, audience or even in the Zoom? I'm, so, go ahead, ma'am. Can you state your name and your address, please?
My name's Robin Kunkel. I live at 2797 Trewood Lane. Our property fronts on Warren Road in this area. It's, and I agree, Warren Road is a beautiful, gorgeous, uh, road that's commonly used for recreation. I'm just wondering, it's my understanding that this designation will not preclude future development, it will not preclude future paving of the road, it will not preclude, um, routine maintenance along here, and it will not, um, influence the speed limit of this road. So, I'm wondering, what if anything will change with Warren Road except for signage?
Do you want me to answer?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, sure, I can, uh, so, the designation gets registered as a designated road. Uh, technically, it's just the signage and just the, uh, recognition that it is a natural beauty. Uh, certainly, if there was some type of, um, vegetation that need to be removed in some manner, if more than 10%, then we would have to have another public hearing. But if that, uh, vegetation's being removed for some safety purpose, or if somebody's coming to put a driveway in for sight distance, and that's for a safety reason, and then we, we don't have to have that public hearing. Um, but, yeah, it would, if the road, you can have a natural beauty road that's paved, um, we would still perform our routine maintenance, uh, which is, you know, one swath of mowing. Uh, we would, uh, try to limit some of our trimming, but if certainly if overhead vehicles need to get through, then we would still do our normal trimming.
I'm wondering, would it have any impact on the number of cars that traffic Warren Road? If that were to increase, is this a way to perhaps?
That's a good question.
Face them?
Yeah, I don't know that we've ever done a before and after study for when one is designated, but I don't think it would have much impact.
So, if there was a lot more traffic along the road, that wouldn't, this would not be a factor?
Sure, we, so, if, uh, we do have the, within our policy to reevaluate, so if we did see, like, um, where the roadway was impacted and a large amount of volume was going through that road, then we could, technically, we could go back and look and then, uh, remove that designation.
Can you tell me how you decide when to, um, put maintenance on the road? How do you decide when to grade it? I think it could use more. I mean, it's filled with potholes.
Right, yeah, I, I know our maintenance staff, you know, uh, deals with a lot of those maintenance practices for, as far as Warren Road, I don't know, I mean, it's a local road, so we're, um, you know, we, we go out and we grade that road when, when it's needed. I, I don't, I would have to get back to you on when and how we.
When would this preclude, um, the installation of guardrails? There are some really steep ravines on the road, and in the winter, when it's icy, you could easily slip into those.
No, it's, uh, as it states, so if there was a safety reason to have guardrail installed and, and it was warranted, then, yeah, we would, we would still install guardrail.
And I would encourage you, if there's, um, anyone in the audience or listening, if, if you have a request or for grading and whatnot, use our, um, WCRC Fix It at the website, or it's an app you can get on your phone, and you can submit those service requests, and it goes directly to our foreman, and he helps prioritize, he is the one that prioritizes the area for the district. And if you, if you had saw something, hey, this area is steep, uh, would it be something you would consider doing guardrail, or it would go to our tracking and safety staff to, to evaluate? So, those are the types of things you can do with our WCRC Fix It.
Well, it's my understanding this designation will put this stretch of Warren Road on a registry, a state registry?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And there will be signs posted, but pretty much it will remain the same.
It's recognition.
Okay, thank you very much.
I do have a comment, uh, online in our Zoom. I have two, actually, so I'm gonna go with Lulu. I'm gonna ask you to mute. Or ask you to unmute. Go ahead.
Hi there. I, uh, have lived on Warren Road, I believe, for about eight years now, and, uh, started daydreaming about living on Warren Road several years before that. Um, my family now has a small farm and we have two young boys, um, and my comment is just directed at, uh, the question about groomed landscaping being, uh, counting as maintenance or not natural area. I wondered if that included the motherhouse, since it's such a large maintained property, um, that that might skew the numbers some, given that, uh, it takes up such a large portion of Warren Road. Um, my other question was actually about the road traffic counts as it relates to, um, removing the designation of a natural road. We, as, as some of you may or may not know, in this neighborhood, have a lot going on relating to, uh, the large gravel pit that is, uh, nearby. And that has significantly, significantly impacted road traffic, um, and could continue to do so, um, depending on the outcomes of the gravel pit's ability to continue impacting our neighborhood negatively. Um, in regards to the railings, uh, forgive the background noise for my little one, but in, in regards to the railings, um, and icy roads, I, I heard someone mention salting the roads. This is a dirt road, so they don't get salted. Um, they are treated some, but the, uh, the reason the roads are so, uh, potholed is also because there are very large trucks going to and from the gravel pit going down this road, um, that are not supposed to be going down this road and are far over the weight limit, um, and it's degrading the edges of the road, um, to the point where some of them have actually become almost like little mini canyons when it rains. Um, the sisters will speak to this as they walk up and down nearly every day, which is something we love so much, but given the, the surface of the road, it's clay, when it rains and then freezes, it is deadly on that road. Um, we have had to help or, or discuss help with many people who have slid off the road or who've tried to come down the road and it's not passable. All of that to say, all of those things are impacting this road and will be impacting the vegetation, the water drainage, um, and the safety of the road in general. And while I don't want anything like a sidewalk, I do want to make sure that the integrity of the road is maintained enough, um, that the nature can continue to thrive, given that it's part of the green belt, and also that neighbors like our sisters and others who enjoy riding, biking, um, et cetera, including horse riding, on our road can continue to do so, you know, when my children are bringing their grandchildren here to visit. So, anything we can do to protect that would be great, and I just wanted to point out that a lot of this is also being impacted by, uh, mid-Michigan materials and their trucks. So, I would love for those things to also be considered in this discussion. Um, but thank you so much for meeting, I appreciate it.
Um, I'll comment as far as the percentages for the, uh, the sister's property, I can't remember. Yeah, um, of, from what I remember, most of that was still considered as natural, like where we, we could see the landscape stuff behind, but since there was, like, still a row of trees right up next to the road, we can, we did consider that that was natural.
Gotcha.
Parts of it, yeah, there was like one, one little section where it was landscaped all the way up to the road, but the majority of it, we, we always tend to, if it's so questionable, we will count it as natural.
So, I guess here's my question. Um, we have a farm, including large spaces, you know, in our pasture and things that we don't regularly mow intentionally to make it a natural space. I mow usually right in front of our home because it just provides clearance for roads, or for, I'm sorry, cars to be able to see pedestrians and my young children and/or critters who might be roaming at the edge of the property, but I don't want that to happen if it would impact the, the, you know, the impact of the natural road, uh, setting. But I also was about to mow some more of that section so that the sisters could come visit my goats, which they do, again, nearly every day. But I don't want to not mow if that's gonna impact what is continued, or counted as a natural setting, given that we've planted orchards and have honeybees, et cetera.
Yeah, I, they hear, thank you.
Um, I mean, anything mowed up to the road will count as landscaped, so it does affect it, but, I mean, we can wait and see how the, the board decides on this with it being a little bit less than what it needs to be.
Gotcha, yeah. I, I mean, I guess the main reason I mow at the edge of the road is for pedestrian safety, so I guess that's a, an interesting conundrum then.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can certainly report that to the board in our findings.
Yeah. Like, we don't, I mean, we don't fertilize, we don't use any weed killer, et cetera, et cetera. Um, you know, so, uh, we're pretty aggressively pro-nature, but I've kept the edge of the road clear just so that sisters don't get taken out, because that would be, um, that would be horrific, and also, the cars go very fast down this road, and it's, I'm shocked it hasn't happened yet, I'm sure Sister can mention that it probably has come close many times.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you for your comment.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay. And we ask to, uh, everyone to mute themselves afterwards, thank you, Lulu. Uh, we have Ben V., if you can, I will ask you to unmute, and, uh, you can make your comments.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, okay, so, good morning. Um, so, I come here today to express my support for the Natural Beauty Road designation. Um, over the past many years, as a cyclist, I've become really familiar with this section and, as well as many of the other dirt roads in the north side of Ann Arbor, and, uh, many of my rides use Warren as a key east-west route, so I connect to areas like Stein, which I do believe Stein may have a Natural Beauty Road signage on it, as well as, um, other sections of Warren have Natural Beauty Road signage. And, um, I just, I find that this, this little connector would be just perfect and inconsistent with other, other contexts. So, in particular, um, what led, like, my experiences on Warren Road had really led me to just enjoy this area quite a bit, and as a resident, I witnessed a significant increase in cyclists and pedestrian traffic. On any given Saturday, I probably see, you know, six, eight dozens, uh, group, just cyclists go by, and was mentioned, and, um, there, there's, uh, currently two large cycling events that happen in the spring and the fall, and, uh, I've seen hundreds of, of participants on those rides, um, just getting out and enjoying, enjoying the countryside. So, um, the other thing I want to mention is that this section of road is featured in a, a cycling book called Dirt Roads Washtenaw, Biking the Backroads, and, um, it provides a lot of, uh, other useful, like, non-motorized, uh, cycling connectors, but, uh, Warren is sort of that first ring road outside of, uh, Ann Arbor city limits that a lot of people use as a connector to get to other areas. So, um, just really, this is a, a perfect opportunity to add continuity to that Natural Beauty Road segment, um, both east of, uh, of, of the, the proposed designation area, as well as west, um, kind of on the side of Whitmore Lake. That's just a really important non-motorized connector, um, and this is also really consistent with how Ann Arbor Township's land use planning and open space preservation has been approached. So, um, I think that this segment really ties together a lot of key concepts, both in the land use and, uh, transportation planning space, and, uh, I'd really like to see, um, just that this segment gets recognized and preserved if possible, either through the Natural Beauty Road designation or other, other designations. Um, so, with that, I just want to say thank you for, for considering this, and, and I really hope that, uh, this designation, uh, is pursued, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My name is Sister Catherine Marie. I'm representing the community of the Dominican Sisters of Mary Mother of the Eucharist. We live at 4597 Warren Road, and I know, uh, this has come up multiple, we have come up multiple times now, but just to kind of paint the picture for you, we have, uh, during the school year, there's about 40 of us who live at our motherhouse, but in our community, we can have up to 100 sisters living at our house during the summer. Um, and, uh, our community teaches in schools across the country, uh, but during the summer we all come together, and it's often a topic of conversation of what a treasured space we have, uh, where our motherhouse is located on Warren Road, that we're very close to the city, very accessible, we have a lot that we are able to access easily, and yet, we're set apart and we've got this quiet kind of secluded space that's beautiful, that's very, very beautiful, and, uh, we do enjoy the outdoors a lot, so, and, uh, and any given hour, you could have anywhere between one and 100 sisters walking on the road, running on the road, biking on the road. I go out every single day, first part of my day, and, uh, the beauty of this space is something that's very important to our life as we, we strive to kind of, um, find, find peace within ourselves, um, and, um, you know, commune with the Lord to be able to then go out and do the work that He's calling us to in schools that we teach at. Um, and I think that our location, the, the natural beauty of the area is really, really important for that, and so, uh, and I, I was struck by the, the comment that, um, 25 signatures were validated for the, the designation of the Natural Beauty Road, and I know there were about 50 of us who signed it, who live at the motherhouse, so, um, there, there's a lot of support from the sisters for this, for this designation of a Natural Beauty Road. It's something that's very important to our daily life, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I have another, uh, comment here in the chat from John Hufford. For some reason, John, I cannot, uh, you're not logged into the audio. I cannot get you through audio. I cannot ask you to unmute. He says he doesn't, um, he can't raise his hand, so I cannot get you there, sorry, John. If you would put your question in the chat, I can ask your question for you. Does anyone else in the room have a comment? Sure, ma'am. We ask that you say your name and your address, please, thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Laura Welch, and I live at 4954 Dixborough Road in Ann Arbor Township. Um, I do have friends who live on Warren Road who are out of the country, so I'm kind of here listening for them as well, and I use Warren Road a lot myself, it's beautiful. And I use Warren Road a lot myself. It's a beautiful, beautiful place. My question, what I'm trying to understand, I, I moved to the township about a year ago. I've lived in Michigan and this area of Michigan for many years. But what I'm trying to understand is what the provisions are for preserving or encouraging non-motorized use of township roads, because it sounds like the decision to make Warren Road a natural beauty road is an attempt at traffic calming measures to make it safer for pedestrians and cyclists. And the families and people who live along that road to use that road safely in non-motorized ways. I live on Dixboro Road, pretty close to Plymouth Road. And that is a paved road. There's very heavy traffic. There's very heavy truck traffic. The traffic often exceeds the speed limit. The signing is limited to what the speed limit is. The, the margins, the trying to think of the name of it, shoulders, thank you. The shoulders of the road are narrow and degraded. People try to use that road, like I like to use that road. I would like to walk to the farmer's market. I've tried to cycle on that road before you get to the, the paved bike path. And it's risking your life. I see people do it. They try to do it all the time, all ages. It's very dangerous. I think it would be great to have access roads that would, for example, get a cyclist safely from Plymouth and Dixboro to Warren Road to use that as a cycling avenue. I'm terrified to do it myself and I used to bike commute in the city of San Francisco. Right? I think it's more dangerous here than it is there with all the traffic of that city. So I guess my larger question is, what are the ways that even if you live a busy paved two lane road like Dixboro Road, what are the provisions for making that safer for non-motorized use? I'll just take your thoughts or comments.
I think that question probably goes beyond the scope of the Natural Beauty Road meeting, but we would be happy to follow up with you on that topic of non-motorized. Like example of Dixboro Road, I'd be happy to follow up with you if you want to leave your name and number.
John actually is ready. One second. I'm going to ask you to unmute, John.
And, and forgive me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Brett, were there, were there any provisions in the Natural Beauty Road for non-motorized?
No, there's not anything within the act or within the policy that has us consider those, you know, the non-motorized. I mean, certainly it's probably impacted through the volume of, you know, traffic. But there's nothing within the act. Granted, it's a pretty old act, so I mean, it, it doesn't take that into consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Go ahead, John.
Okay, so I've got a, a number of questions. And maybe some of them you, you have addressed already, but I was late joining because the information that the, the meeting ID was, was incorrect on the website. The, my questions are what data the board considers in, in, in making the designation? Are there things like, you know, the, the, what counts of trips are made on it? What are the considerations with respect to other roads? For instance, it seems like Joy Road, my, I mean, if, if anything impacts motorists being able to connect between, say Nixon and Airheart or Nixon and Dixboro. You know, what, what impact would that then have on, say, Joy Road, which is a parallel, which is a parallel road? You know, are there, is there information on, I mean, I'm hearing questions about, I'm hearing concerns about accidents and people going over speed limit. And I'm wondering if there's any data on that. Are there data on accidents and things like that, if people are traveling in excess of the speed limit? So I'm, I'm interested in that. It, to me, it, I mean, I, I use, I do travel that road quite a bit and it seems like it's a, it is a collector for traffic between, say, Pontiac Trail and then Nixon Road and and Dixboro or Airheart, as people go to the office park at Domino's Farms or out to Plymouth Road. Just wondering, so again, wondering, and also wondering what impacts it would have in terms of speed limit and you know, traffic volume and things like that. So those are the questions, those are the questions that I have. And I will mute myself now.
So I'll just explain the, the data that we look at is the, like the character of the road. We do look at the traffic volume. It needs to be a local road. And we just review the roadside development and vegetation and make sure that there's adequate drainage and no safety issues is all of the criteria that we look at in order to or to provide to the board for designation. And it doesn't really impact or the, we haven't studied the before and after of a natural beauty road, so we, we aren't sure of, for sure of the impact that it would have by designating it as one. But we don't feel that it really will make a difference as far as volume.
Yeah, to be, I can just add onto that, like to, to be designated, you have to have under five hundred vehicles per day. That's one of the criteria. So the impact on volume, it may, but we're looking at a twenty-four hour period when we're collecting that data, so it may fluctuate just naturally. But, and, and I guess just to kind of reiterate our process. So we look at the Public Act whenever we're looking at the criteria for evaluating a natural beauty road and our policy. Staff does not make a recommendation to our board on whether to designate or to not designate that Warren Road as a natural beauty road. We collect the data and correct the criteria based on our policy and based on the act. And then it's given to our board and then we summarize. And what today is for is for, to hear your comments, to hear your support or to hear what your concerns are. Whether or not the designation should or should not be considered by our board. We ultimately bring those resolutions to our board and they are the ones that choose whether to deny or approve Warren Road as a natural beauty road.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions? Oh, go ahead, ma'am. Your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Hollis Dayton. I live on thirty-nine oh nine Airheart Road. My property borders Warren and Airheart. Just as far as our, we've been there thirty years. We use it for horseback riding, bicycle riding, walking. My kids have enjoyed being on that beautiful section of road. My question, I know to the east of Airheart on Warren, there's a weight limit. I also know that the trucks that were mentioned from Pitt are not supposed to be traversing back and forth on Warren. They're pretty much supposed to come in north and exit south on Airheart. Is it possible to attach a weight limit on the section of Warren going from Airheart to Nixon? Is that something that can be added to the natural beauty in enhancing it? That there's a weight limit on vehicles that travel there?
I can speak to that one. So the weight restriction, I believe, is for a culvert. And it was based on the, the deterioration of that culvert to the east, I believe. So we do not restrict roadways, public roadways for weights unless it's a bridge or culvert that's been deteriorated. So that, that's the reason for that. And so that would not apply to the, the natural beauty. Certainly. It's a, it's a public road. I don't believe there's any truck restrictions, as I recall, on that public road. So obviously, some of these things that were, are coming up are a result of land use decisions in the surrounding area. Gravel mining being one of them. And, and that's out of the realm of our areas of responsibility at the road commission. So that's just a cause and effect, obviously. But we do not have any, do not have a practice of restricting public roads for, unless there's a infrastructure reason to do so.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any other questions or comments? Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm Robin Kunkel. Thank you again for allowing me another question. And this is probably out of the scope of the Nature Beauty Road, but since we are at the road commission, I thought I'd ask. Is there a way to impose a speed limit on a dirt road in the county? It's my understanding that it's fifty-five miles per hour.
Correct. Based on state law, we follow state law whenever we establish speed limits. On a soft surface road, due to the ever-changing condition of that road, speed limits are not allowed to be posted. It follows a prima facie speed limit of up to fifty-five based on conditions.
I would think soft surface would speak that it should be lower, not higher.
It definitely, the condition of the road can impact the speed limit. But the state of Michigan believes that the maximum prima facie speed limit can be up to fifty-five miles an hour.
So it's something the legislature would have to change?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, I have one more question from Lulu. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hi there. I just had a quick question regarding the infrastructure of the road. Just since it was brought up by the previous speaker, so we're saying that we a deterioration of infrastructure would count as something the road commission would get involved with. What are those criteria? And does that involve degradation of the edges of the roadway? Due to like water damage or erosion, et cetera?
No, the infrastructure I was referring to, and I apologize if I was not clear, was culverts and bridges.
Culverts and bridges only, but then you also said, or if it was, if there was an issue with the integrity of the road. Correct?
Yeah, the, the restriction typically is culverts or bridges for weight restrictions.
Sure. And then was there anything based on road integrity relating to water or runoff?
No.
Related to?
Not, not generally for our practices, no.
I just wanted to check on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Oh, I have one more question from Adam Goodman. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hi, my name's Adam Goodman. I'm a resident actually of the city of Ann Arbor. But I am one of the people who've been talked about who bike down this road very frequently. From spring to fall, when the weather's nice, I'd, I'd say at least once a week. I do so because it's a beautiful place to ride a bike with relatively low traffic. So I, I just want to briefly say I, I definitely do support this designation as a natural beauty road. I think it's, you know, consistent with the idea. All the features that exist on this road are consistent with the idea of a natural beauty road and sort of a unique opportunity to have something like that so close to the city limits. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm Tina Sayer. We live at four, seven, zero, zero Warren Road. We've been there for twenty-seven years. And I've read through essentially the, the trimming of shrubs and trees. And I would be more than happy to support this if this means that the guy mowing doesn't turn his mower on the side and destroy all the trees. That's what's happened in the past on that road when they come through and they just rip and shred all the trees alongside the road. So if you could tell me, will that happen anymore?
Our, our normal practices would still be maintained. And if that's our boom mower, and if, and, and those priorities are set by our operations department. And if that's a, a method that they feel is necessary along the roadway to maintain that vegetation encroaching on the roadway, then certainly they, they would continue that practice.
Well, it says that this should be done judiciously with proper tools, so as not to leave unsightly scars.
I, we understand that the boom mowing can look, you know, bad at first, but as that foliage starts to grow in, it's certainly.
It's been years. I just wanted to make that comment because I'm unhappy with the way that it's currently maintained. And I was hoping that this might change some of the practices on the road.
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't have a lot of methods to help maintain that type of growth that tries to encroach on the roadway. And we have to do that mechanically and don't have a lot of manpower to go around and hand trim a lot of areas. So we have to use mechanical methods. And we can certainly bring that comment to our, you know, to our folks that perform that. And let them know what, what your concern is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this will be our last question. John Hufford had, what is the impact of the designation? And how would pedestrians and motorists experience the change as a result of the designation?
I think it's been brought up. It's, it's a recognition. There's signs and, and there's a designation that gets registered with the state. And ultimately, the experience wouldn't change.
Okay, thank you. This will conclude our our presentation and we appreciate everyone for being here. Thank you for attending. If you have any further comments, please contact Becky Houl. Her number is there and her email address is there. H O U L E B at W C roads dot org. Thank you and have a great day.
Um, we also want to, I'll let you know, you have until August twenty-fifth. If you guys want to submit any additional comments for us to include for our presentation to the board. So if you want to fill out the comment sheet or just send me an email, whatever, we'll make sure that that gets included if you get it here by the twenty.
Thank you all for attending. Appreciate it.
Thank you.